Everybody, let's sort of get back into our stalls here. And I will call the meeting of the Ames Community College Board of Trustees to order. And let's all join in the pledge of allegiance. There it is.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Now we need to approve the agenda. Is there any additions or corrections, members, that you'd like to see?
I move approval of the agenda.
Thank you, Carol. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I don't know who did it. Jean? Thank you, Jean. And is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion is carried. Next, we have public comment. Mr. Timothy?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. There are no public comments.
All right.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you much. Consent agenda. Members, I hope you've all had a chance to read the minutes of the January 30th and February 6th board meetings. Is there any corrections or additions that need to be made? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you, Jean.
No second.
Thank you, Lyle. There's a discussion, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion is carried. Okay, now, we're going to hear some reports of some fascinating things that are going on within the college. And it looks like Al Rosen, Rose?
Rodenberg.
Rodenberg, okay. Welcome, sir.
So as Al is getting comfortable up there, I want to make an announcement that Al has agreed and accepted to be our 2019 commencement MC.
Outstanding.
Get some of that on graduation. That'd be great. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Al. Very excited by that. Thank you, Dr. B. Members of the board, Dr. Bornstein, I have some events from SGA for you. First, from our cap, on March 27th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., in the community or in the College Center, we'll be having a Get High Naturally event aimed to reduce harm and raise awareness about cannabis and the chemicals in cannabis and educate about using responsibly and get ideas for ways to release endorphins in a better way. So that will be, once again, from 11:00 to 2:00 on March 27th in the College Center. And then on March 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Greeley Campus in Westview, we'll be having Safe Zone 101 training. The purpose of the workshop is to reduce homophobia, transphobia, and heterosexism, thereby making a safer environment for all members of our community. Participants will gain knowledge about issues facing LGBT+ community, resources to help support the community, and develop skills to better support and advocate for the community. On April 23rd, I'm having a clothing swap in between College Center and Ed Beatty Hall from 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. The clothing drive started this week. We'll be accepting donations from April 12th, or from, sorry, March 18th to April 12th. And then I'll be taking them and getting them all ready to have our event on the 23rd of April, where we'll have lunch and people can come and treat themselves to some nice new duds. Lastly, we had our NSLDC conference last month. It was amazing. It was very fun. One of the best experiences of my life and my time at Ames so far. We learned a lot from different schools, different school leaders. We talked a lot about how we can use our voices to make an impact on our campuses. So it was very fun. Do you have any questions?
Give us some examples of that conference?
Sure. One of the workshops that I attended was about using, saying sorry more responsibly and putting action behind saying I'm sorry. So rather than saying I'm sorry for not dressing up today, I could say, thank you all for dressing up and make it more impactful, rather than constantly apologizing, even though I'm not really making mistakes, I'm just saying sorry. It was very fun.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have the Faculty Association. And Brooke, Isley? Elsley, I guess.
Yes, Elsie. That's right. I'm happy to be back. Good afternoon. I had a baby, so here we go. I'm back to normal. Yay. Okay. So I'm here for the Ames Faculty Association. We have a couple of things to tell you about today. The first is that Professor and Chair of Agricultural Sciences and Technology, Amy McFarland, presented at the Governor's Forum on Colorado Agriculture at the end of February. Her session was entitled "Community College Innovation in Rural and Agricultural Communities." She collaborated with faculty from Northeastern Junior College as well as Morgan Community College. Then, our Instructor of Music at the ECA, he's also part-time here for Ames, Michael Karp, has been incredibly busy. He's an instructor of music. He performed at an international marimba festival, marimba, yes, very fun, in South Florida. He also just had a CD come out. He played on a track for a CD that was just released this fall. And he also took a whole group of his students from the ECA to UNC, performed some music with some of the people at UNC, and did a whole presentation for his students at the ECA there. So he's been incredibly busy in the music department. Then next, I have Professor and Chair of Graphic Design. I have Brian Dunning and Instructor of Art, Dan Augustin, are going to have their art presented as an exhibit at Mitchener Library. It is called "Art from the Heart," a regional fine art juried show sponsored by the Greeley Art Association. These two artists, Brian Dunning and Dan Augustin, their work is all over Ames Community College. So if you go into the ATTC, you will see both of their artwork. It's in Westview. It's in Ed Beatty. These two are really, really prominent members of the art society and they teach here. So next, on February 12th, we had our Conversation Day, and we had four faculty members that facilitated or co-facilitated sessions. We had Dr. Serisa Reynolds, Sandy Myers, Kayla Brusato, and Carrie Noble. For community involvement, I have Professor of CIS, Jen Bailey, is hosting Code &amp; Coffee for students of Ames as well as for the community at Zoe's Coffee in downtown Greeley throughout this entire semester. She also went down to Denver and did a Dev Fest, a Computer Programming Developer Festival for kids and families. So she's been out in the public doing some things. A publication that has come out recently, Professor of Chemistry, Christine Godinsky, was a member of the editing team for preparing for your ACS examination in general chemistry, the Official Guide, second edition. It was released in this fall of '18. Members of the editing team were responsible to proofread the official guide, evaluate content, and nine members got together to do the editing. She was the only one from a community college. So that was from our chemistry department. Conferences, Instructor of Philosophy, Eric Easley, attended the American Philosophical Association Central Division Conference in Denver in February of 2019. And we have a couple acknowledgements and awards to look at as well. Instructor of CIS, Connie Lance, completed an extremely difficult computer programming certificate through Udacity for Android developers. I was told that it's an incredibly difficult program. Many people don't make it through there. So we have an acknowledgement coming in from Jen Bailey in CIS. And second, the Instructor of Education, Dr. Apricot Truitt, won the Success Foundation Greeley Evans School Educator of the Year, and she was featured in the Greeley Tribune on February 13th. That is all I have for you today. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
All right. Any questions, members? Okay. Thank you much. Good report. You know what you're getting into with this baby, don't you? Okay, now, Staff Association, and we have the out-of-breath Amy, who just ran in.
Good afternoon. First, I'd like to start with a really big event that we had last month. Over Valentine's Day, we decided to take the opportunity for Valentine's Day and use it as a way for staff and coworkers to appreciate each other. So we created, and I'll give you all an example, a little Artigram that people could go online and fill out a simple form and appreciate each other and appreciate their coworkers and just take it as an opportunity to do something nice for someone else. And the response that we got was really overwhelming. We had to tape and label and send out 420 of these, which was pretty incredible. It was a really feel-good thing. We got lots of great feedback from everyone around campus. All four campuses were involved, so it was really great. It was really good for ASA and everyone on campus. There were 21 ripples for the month of February, and selfishly, I'd like to highlight the one that we submitted for Mike Harrison, who is our mail clerk, because he stepped up without hesitation and delivered nearly 420 Artigram for us. He stopped by with mail baskets, came back to pick them up, and made sure that all 420 were delivered across all four campuses on Valentine's Day. In true Mike fashion, he did it all with a smile and never batted an eye at the extra work that we put on his plate. Mike is an exemplary employee who never hesitates to help someone out or put a smile on someone else's face. He truly embodies the Ames values. We have some other staff accomplishments that happened this month as well. Connie Lattei in purchasing earned the Certified Professional Public Buyer designation through the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing and Universal Public Procurement Certification Council. That's a mouthful. One of our academic advisors, who chose not to be named, attended the Academic Impressions Conference that focused on improving advising effectiveness through interpersonal and digital communications. He had the opportunity to share interpersonal and digital communication best practices, including Google Voice and Google Texting that we use at Ames Community College. Dr. Nancy Gray in financial aid received emeritus status as a board member for the American Cancer Society in Weld County. She became involved with the American Cancer Society over 30 years ago and was a board member for 25 years. She has volunteered during numerous fundraising events and various health fairs to represent the American Cancer Society. Trish Ravino in the Trio Program began a master's degree in organizational leadership at CSU Global this month. And Claire Kopp in the Stays Division presented a workshop at the 2019 League of Innovations in Community College National Conference in New York City. The presentation covered tips and strategies for creating collaborative relationships between academic and student affairs professionals. That's it for this month.
Wonderful. Any questions or comments, members? Okay. Thank you. Great report. Ah, we get an Artigram. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Dr. B, it looks like we're ready for the President's Report.
Okay. First, on our President's Report is Excellence at Ames. And I would certainly like to thank the folks who came up from Fort Leapton to do this with regard to our camp program. So I'd like to introduce quickly Dr. Robert Garcia from the Bueno Center. He's from CU Boulder, and we'll be introducing our Excellence at Ames student today. So thank you, Dr. Garcia.
Thank you so much for having us. Again, I am Robert Garcia. I'm with the Bueno Camp Scholarship Program. Our second student speaker wasn't able to make it because of the schedule change. He does have class right now, and I did not give him permission to ditch class. But I am happy to introduce Isabella Cardenas, who is our other speaker, and I think a lot more interesting to listen to than me. But I will help her through some of the information about the program first before we let her speak to her personal narrative. But Isabella was a camp scholar in our program in 2012 and '13, graduated from Ames, transferred to UNC, graduated from UNC, and is a current graduate student at UC Denver, studying psychology, multicultural psychology. So really quickly, so you have a little more context about what camp is. We are federally funded grant through the Department of Education. Our target population is we recruit college freshmen whose background is in seasonal or migrant farm work. So if their family, any member of their immediate family does seasonal or migrant farm work, then they are qualified and eligible, bearing some other qualifications. We began our partnership with Ames in 2001, and it is a partnership with the Bueno Center, which is part of the University of Colorado Boulder.
So the camp program, they recruit 35 students a year, and they give a full tuition. They pay for books, the tuition, and then they take them to cultural field trips throughout the year at Ames. And, oh, it's housed in Fort Leapton.
So to bore you a little bit more with the details before we hear Isabella speak to her story, we are in the midst of a longitudinal study, so I've been able to track the students since 2006. We're following over 350 students on average throughout those years. We have an 86% year-one completion rate. 93% of those completers continue on to higher education after that first year. Within that time now, we've had our students earn over 252 college degrees, ranging from associate's degrees all the way up to doctoral degrees. And we currently have 70 camp students who are transferred to other four-year institutions right now, present in the state of Colorado, but other institutions as well. But I think it'd be more meaningful to hear Isabella's story.
Well, thank you again for having us. And so a little bit about me is that, so when I was in high school, I didn't have a lot of support in high school and more so in higher education or information about higher education. I also wasn't a very good student in high school, but that's all right. I ended up learning about the camp program my freshman year in high school, when my brother was actually in camp, in the camp program about in 2009. And once I was about to graduate, he kind of directed me like, you should really go and get a little bit more information, maybe just get help on financial aid and what that is actually like. Because being a first-generation student is already hard enough, and then coming from a migrant family background adds an additional factor to my educational pursuits. Luckily, I was introduced to the camp program and to Robert and around the time to all of the other staffs that were working there. When I was finally able to apply for the camp program and then through my first year in camp, I actually received a 4.0 GPA. And to me, that was very satisfying because I, well, like I said, I was not a good student in high school, so therefore I didn't feel like I even had the academic knowledge to even pursue or receive a 4.0 throughout my first year. And not only that, so that didn't stop there. So because of their academic support throughout, like, my first year, they didn't kick me out of the office once I was done, luckily, and they allowed me to keep coming over and just keep getting the support I needed. So when I was able to finish here with my associate, when I continued on to UNC, I was still emailing them like, hey, can you look over my paper, please? Or just kind of needing help with any letters of recommendations, help with random interviews or how to just navigate the realm in higher education, because I didn't have that other support elsewhere. While at UNC, during my undergraduate experience, I was in a McNair program where I had to conduct a research, and I selected to choose more so like the efficacy of the camp and increasing student success and completion of higher education. And more so, I was just interested to see how the students in the camp program felt, because I felt very passionate about the camp program. Like, if it wasn't for them, I wouldn't have continued on in higher education. And it turns out that everybody I interviewed was pretty much on the same line. Like, there were some people who I interviewed and their quotes were just sort more so like, I would have no motivation on continuing education. I wouldn't have gone to college if it wasn't for camp. And because of camp, they were able to receive a degree or they continued on in higher education. And of course, like, for me, when I was able to graduate, I always, I always look back and just, I'm so thankful to have been a part of a program that is so motivated and so dedicated in helping students just continue on in higher education or supporting them throughout their educational experience. And it's, I'm very fortunate enough to be able to say that. I am currently in a master's program where I'm pursuing to get a license in multicultural counseling. However, like, looking back in 2009, I would have never guessed that that's where I would end up. I would have never thought that I was going to go to graduate school or even just have the desire to continue on even after receiving a master's degree, because I do want to get my PhD. But in 2009 or before that, I would have been like, mm, school, I'll be done here, like, here soon. But I'm just very fortunate enough to have been a part of such an amazing group. Thank you for listening to me. Have any questions?
All right. Any questions, board?
What was the impetus that made you continue? Was it just the involvement of all the students and staff with one another? What was it?
It's, yeah, I would say yes to all of the above, because having, first off, having the people, like, the advisors there was a great support system. But then having the students that were in the camp program, it was this weird niche of group of people that I would never really see together other than in this room or like in the classrooms together. Just having people that came from the same kind of background as I did, I just, I didn't have that before. And they were all dedicated and motivated enough to continue in education. So being surrounded by people who looked like me, came from my own kind of background, and then also, like, motivated to continue education is a rare find for me. I just didn't know that that existed. So then studying together and then kind of competing with each other during our math test or something like that, like, oh, well, I got a 92. And they're like, oh, well, I got a 93. Like, that was a weird experience overall, but I loved it. I would have never guessed that just a bunch of people who came from my own background would have also wanted to continue in education. So it's a little bit of everything.
Thank you.
I think that everything you've said and my observation of the camp program on our campus in Fort Leapton really shows the value of a cohort and the cohort program. And not only is this a specific cohort of students, but they have dedicated space on that campus. They have a dedicated lounge that is theirs. They have a study area that is theirs. One of the reasons during our construction project some years ago, one reason that we fought so hard to not just keep our basketball backstop, which was gone for a while, I was there when they cut it down and nearly cried, but to put that back up and then give a sand volleyball was so that those, these students, and we're looking at young people, so that they had a place to be, something to do, to keep them on the campus all day, which is also important for the cohort. And it's those kinds of supports, in addition to the staff, Robert, everybody being there all the time with them, I think, that has led to or contributed to the success of this group. And anytime there's a need for volunteers on that campus, like when we have the Welcome Students Days and all that, it's the camp students who are there doing that. They're manning the welcome desk. They're the ones who are really supporting the campus, and thank you for what you're doing for us.
I also would like to add, too, like, I think that they make it really easy for us to come back every time to volunteer to do anything. Like, honestly, anytime they call me like, hey, well, you, of course, yeah, I'll be there. Like, there doesn't have to be a, well, we'll give you this, we'll give you that. It's just, they are willing to help us throughout all of it, so why wouldn't we want to give back to the people that are helping us also? It's a no-brainer.
Well, I just want to say congratulations for your degrees, and I'm extremely happy for the program, and I'm so glad that it was there to help you and support you. And I hope that many more students get the benefit of that program. But don't forget to congratulate yourself either, and I congratulate you for having the drive and the work ethic and everything else to take advantage of a program like this and to get the benefit of it. So congratulations all the way around.
Thank you.
I would echo that. Congratulations. And the thing I would say is, given your enthusiasm and willingness to go forward, you're going to do great in life. It's going to be great. Thank you.
So Isabella, I just want to thank you so much for sharing your story with us. It's incredibly important for us, not only as a board, but also as employees, to hear of your story so that we keep in mind always why we're here. We're here for you as our graduates and our alumni. We're here for our current students. So hearing what drew you to camp and Ames and beyond is really important for us to keep that foremost in our minds. So thank you again for taking the time and for all your success. And I do have just a little thank you gift that I'm going to run around and give to both you and Dr. Garcia. Thank you.
Just a quick shameless plug. We are having our first-ever reunion this May, on May 11th, the day after our graduation at the Fort Leapton campus, with help, support from the foundation and the alumni office. So everyone is, of course, welcome to join us. We'll have food and other activities, and you'll get to meet a lot more of our great students like Isabella. Thank you again for having us.
And when is that? Did you say?
May 11.
May 11. Okay. Good. Get that on your calendar, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I would like to ask Dr. Rothmer, our Executive Vice President, to come up and give some highlights from his area.
So again, the daunting task of following Excellence at Ames. So thank you very much for sharing that. But I do think I found a topic for you today that's almost equally as powerful. A pause and a ta-da. We had to talk a little bit about accreditation. I'm sorry.
How exciting.
So as you know, we've typically come to you before talking about the Strategic Plan Strategy II, Enhancing Operational Performance, specifically tactic line 33 to ensure credit to clock hour compliance. This is even a little bit of a bigger picture, and this is just a quick, here's what we are doing as an institution to maintain our accreditation. As you know, not too long ago, Ames Community College switched from the AQUIP model to the Open Pathway Model, which is one of three different models that you can choose, and it's a 10-year process. However, that doesn't mean we are good for 10 years and we're going to wait until 2024, '25 to do anything. We have assembled a team representing the entire institution, and our first kickoff meeting as a steering committee will be this Thursday so that we can continue the excellence at Ames through maintaining our accreditation and our continuous improvement process. And in addition to that, a small team will be attending the Higher Learning Commission Annual Conference a few days, the first week of April. So that's the update that I have for you today.
Would you like to continue on as your interim academic affairs vice president role?
I will absolutely do that. Thank you. So two, I kind of categorized the update this month around two of the strategies. The first one being Strategy One, Empowering Students to Succeed, specifically tactic line six, to expand alternative course and service delivery schedule options. And the other strategy we'll give some quick updates on is Number Three, Enriching Northern Colorado's Economic Development. Line 55 tactic, Increasing Non-Credit Offerings to Complementing Existing For-Credit Programs. And while I certainly can't, well, I'm not as good as displaying the passion that Dr. Rand and our other deans that worked through all this, I do want to highlight for you, and you have in front of you a little placard that was used to help advertise the Surgical Nurse with PerioP 101 course that began on March 6th. And do you have a small cohort that has started that program? And what is exciting about this is the, you see an acronym on there, AORN, so this is the Association for Periodic Operative Nurses. They were extremely excited in Ames going into this area because it is, in the healthcare field, one of the gaps, and they typically have to hire traveling nurses to fill these roles. And they said, this is the first community college in Colorado to join this foray in terms of developing that training, so very exciting. And we were able to offer, as you see on that marketing piece, a discount for individuals due to the work that the team has done, working with the foundation and having been awarded a Hanson Grant. So putting together all of these pieces to help meet needs, again, in Northern Colorado and the community. So a great opportunity of our areas in terms of allied health and our workforce development, people partnering together to meet needs in the community. Any guests, please?
I just wanted to make a comment to the board about the PerioP program. So in other board positions that I sit on, both Margot from NCMC and the new CEO at UC Health are both thrilled about this program. So I know Trish is somewhere in the audience. I thought I saw her. So congratulations. Hey, Trish, oh, there you are. So congratulations. I know there are-
I know they're very, very excited to see how this goes, where this goes, and how it grows, so good job.
I would like to add my appreciation to, to the whole team for putting this program together, coming from healthcare, and knowing how difficult it is to recruit trained surgical nurses. This is fantastic.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Rand and Rob and your team, for putting this together. The other thing I wanted to highlight for you that I put at your area during the break was the continuing education twenty nineteen spring schedule of classes document. And as we previously shared from the Center of Workforce Development Innovation Report, we revamped our continuing education program, and it's in full swing with this catalog. And I wanted to give you the, the physical document, so you can kinda see the different opportunities that are being offered across our service area. And we'll certainly in the fall, be able to share with you some data and numbers, and how this initiative, as we analyze for continuous improvement, has gone, and then any changes and improvements that we've made with this document. Trustee Ruckel?
Is there a stash of these that I could take some to our Chamber of Commerce meeting tomorrow in Fort Lepton?
Uh, we, um, yes, we will get you what we can.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And just following up from Rob's area, again, wanted to give some more student kudos, as well as program kudos, 'cause we've had two of our air traffic control students, so ATC students, graduates, who just completed the follow-on FAA ATC academy in Oklahoma City, and one of them finished fourth in an academy class of eighteen, while the other finished first in their class.
Woo-hoo!
That's fantastic.
Again, a wonderful testament to the quality of education at Ames, as well as the quality of our students. So just take, you know, matching the two. So, again, phenomenal. And just so you know, that our cabinet members do share notes and communicate. I have some agricultural updates, but I'm gonna leave that to my colleague Timothy, who will be sharing some of those updates during his presentation. Lastly, what I wanted to share with you is a partnership that we have with District Six, specifically Jefferson High School, where we have dual enrolled students earning industry certifications through three classes, Basics of Carpentry, Job Site Safety, as well as OSHA-ten, with their work Habitat for Humanity Home. So the excitement of this is we're, again, putting our dual enrollment classes, getting the business certifications to match with that, and, and partnering with our high school and programs.
Russ, on that line, how many, how many certificates are available that the college has in its, uh, in its curricula?
So I, right now, will say a lot, with the promise to follow up more specifically with you. And it really, and I'll share that in some of our action items, 'cause one of the things, as an institution of our size, we do have a significant number of degree programs and certificates, you know, in terms of meeting the needs. But one of the things we also do is we continually monitor, and working with our advisory boards, of what's, how we tweak what we're having, what we should be offering.
So if a school came to you with a need, you could probably supply, possibly?
We absolutely do whatever we can to meet any stated needs that we find.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hold on, any?
Any other questions, or? I just, you know, I, looking at your catalog here, and I remember the article in, what was it, The Tribune, or was it The Post, early on, that talked about the hemp program, and how Ames was ahead of the curve, and really getting out there, and educating people on what it's all about.
Our team has done phenomenally well, in terms of, again, meeting that industry need and getting ahead. In a lot of areas, not only within Colorado, Colorado, but regionally, even across the nation, are looking at Ames and a leader, and not only our agriculture and hemp, but a lot of our other programs as well.
Yeah, great, super.
Thank you, Dr. Rothimer.
Thank you.
Next, we'd like to hear from Mr. Jensen, our vice president for administrative services, who would like to give us some highlights from his unit, as well as our monthly budget update.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Bornstein, you have before you the budget report as of January thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, and I'll just quickly highlight some of the areas on this report. We're at that part of the year where we're feeling very comfortable about tuition, that we're on budget, and actually will be a little bit above budget on tuition as we move through the rest of the fiscal year. That stands true for our fees. Our state appropriations, of course, will be a hundred percent. That's just timing from the state, as they pay us the money that they have budgeted for us. And again, with our general property taxes, as we've talked before, and as I presented even at the budget assumptions work session, that we've seen some dramatic growth in local mill levy values within Weld County, or within our taxing district. And so, again, we're very strong in our general property tax revenue for the fiscal year. Interest income continues to come in strong. Those of you that are familiar with the markets, the federal rate has changed, and bond markets are strong, and so we'll continue to see growth in that area even throughout this fiscal year, and hopefully into next fiscal year even. And as always, I get to be made fun of with the fact that I missed the other revenue by fourteen-hundred-and-thirty-five percent.
Good job.
Good job. Again, that has to do with the oil royalty, oil royalties that we are receiving, and will continue to receive on our wells that are on the Greeley campus property.
It's okay if you err in that direction.
That's right.
It's the other word we worry about.
When I present a budget to you next work session in April, we will have rethought that number, so you'll see a different budget number for next year. On the expenditure side, again, we're a little over halfway through the fiscal year. Things continue to be on track. I don't have any highlights or any items that I need to bring to the board's attention regarding any expenditure orages or issues. And so, with that, I'll stand for any questions on the December thirty-first budget report.
Any questions, member?
I have what is probably a very unfair question. Down under the functional classifications, the first line, instruction, this year we're at forty-nine percent, which is what I would expect at the end of December. Last year, only thirty-nine percent. Any, do you have any recollection as to why it was only thirty-nine percent last year?
I don't. I'll, let me, let me, uh-
That's all right, it's not, it's-
It's probably timing.
Just time, uh, timing, okay, thank you.
Other questions? I'll move on to some quick updates on our facility projects, which is always another exciting topic to present to the board. Again, I'll just go highlight a few. Our IT data center is still, continues to be on track, and will be fully operational by May of two thousand and nineteen. That's that structure that we're building behind cornerstone, maybe you've seen it. It's been under construction for a couple of months now, but that still is on track. Third floor ATTC, we did start the first of March, and as I, according to Mike, we're already through framing on the third floor, so that project's moving along well, and we'll still anticipate being ready for fall semester. The flight simulator, you may have noticed as you drove in, is no longer. The bulk of that was torn down over spring break, even during the bomb cyclone.
[laughing]
I love that terminology. I've, I've never been through a bomb cyclone before. And I've been through a lot when I lived in Montana. So that was unique, but they did, were able to make a lot of progress during the spring break week, kinda just made it a lot easier for students to not have to be around all that, and all the jackhammering and noise that was associated with that. So, the skyline has changed on this end of campus, with that building now torn down. You'll start to see on the fiftieth street entrance, as we head into spring now, we'll continue to plant trees and install sod on the front of campus, so that area of campus will continue to be finalized as we move into spring here. Fort Lepton, we're continuing with the welding project, that continues to be on track, and will be ready for fall of nineteen. The CDL lot that we're building in Fort Lepton is in final design, and we anticipate construction to start late summer, early fall, on the CDL lot down there. The Loveland Airport, our hangar, our new hangar there, we are continuing in renovation, and are still on track to be ready for fall of nineteen. And also, just a quick update on another Fort Lepton, we're still working with the city and the Department of Transportation for our new sign at the Fort Lepton campus, so that's still on track also. So, everything is on track, and we are, we'll start beginning to have our design meetings for our welcome center, and, and renovation of the college center, so that process is ongoing. Of course, as, well, remember, we've hired an architect. We're into that process, and now we're, we'll start to begin all the design work, and incorporating ideas from all areas of campus. There'll be a lot of involvement from students, and staff, and community, and so that'll be another very exciting project that we're heading into here this spring. Other questions, or questions that I can answer on any other facility issues, that, those are some of the highlights I wanted to make to the board on those areas.
Chuck, I think you've said it before, but when do you anticipate maybe breaking ground on the welcome center?
We're still targeting late fall.
Up to nineteen, right, yeah.
Depending on whether, I mean, that's a-
Yeah, sure.
But that's still our anticipated start time for that.
That's moving right along.
It's moving, it's a very aggressive plan, but Mike assures me. Is Mike in the room?
He was, there he is, yeah.
Mike's never failed the campus before, the college.
One, one comment on the, on the Fort Lepton campus sign. I was invited to attend a meeting with some city folks, a couple of our planners, our public works director, with Mr. Millsaps, about the new sign. And they're very supportive, they're very excited about it, especially being able to, you know, show some city things, flash some city things on the sign, as well as college things. Our public works director, who's also the city engineer, just wanted to be sure that our sign is bigger than Greeley's. That seemed to be the key to success with the city, so thank you very much. It will be bigger.
I think, I think actually it will be, yeah.
Yes.
It will be, yeah.
Double-sided, right?
It's double-sided.
It is double-sided, yeah.
Both sides of the highway, you'll see it.
Yeah.
Very good. Other questions? Thank you very much.
How much higher does it have to be?
Just bigger square footage. You know, one is enough, as long as we can satisfy him that it's bigger, that, that was his only question, was, is it gonna be bigger than Greeley's sign?
There we go.
And Mike said, yes.
Very good. Thank you.
And Mike doesn't lie, either, right?
Nope.
No, okay.
So I would like to invite-
Okay, thank you, Chuck.
Mr. Ullman, vice president for Community and College Relations, to give some highlights from the CCR division.
I feel like I'm in competition with Dr. Rothimer, so I've got talking points here as well. So, I don't have a big glossy like he does, but anyway, we'll get to these in due course here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As we get started, I wanna start, we have two new people in the Community and College Relations. The first one, I'll just to hear. The first one we have is Mr. Zach McFarland. Zach, can you just stand there? Zach is our new executive director for marketing and communications, and he's got a rich background in higher education marketing, and we were able to get him after he spent nine years at CSU Online. So we're very thrilled to have him, and just couldn't be more happy, especially me. And we have another Zach, Zach Heron, and I'm gonna ask Heather, who's the campus executive director at Loveland, to introduce.
Good afternoon. So Zach Heron just joined us yesterday, and we're excited he's our new staff associate. He's an alumni of Ames and the Community College, and he's from CSU, from the great experience.
Well, the Community, uh, Community and College Relations Division continues to do great things for Ames. Over at Fort Lepton this week is a busy, busy week. Today is Ag Day, and it started at eight o'clock this morning, is gonna kinda wind up about six o'clock this afternoon, and they've got a, a career, what do they call it, career transfer event from two to four. So it's just a wonderful, wonderful day. They've, you know, a lot of great involvement has gone into that, and then they kinda capitalize on that, and this is, they're, they're looking at on Thursday of hosting the Fort Lepton Chamber of Commerce after hours, at, on campus there from five-thirty to seven. I see trustee Ruckel shaking her head, so looking forward to that, I'm sure, so that'll be good. And then Friday's another big day. The Future Farmers of America will hold their statewide competitions on the campus, and so we're gonna see between four hundred and five hundred students from across Colorado come there, and just to be a part of all those competitions. And not to miss an opportunity, our admissions and recruiting people will be there, and sharing with them all the great things that, that Ames has to offer, so we're looking forward to that as well. And since Fort Lepton, you know, they don't really do that much, but they've added one more event, and that's on Monday, and they've got a luncheon learn, and it, the topic of it is Farm to Table, and it's gonna be presented by Amy McFarland and Catherine Baucher. So just a lot of great stuff that's going on there at Fort Lepton. Yesterday, the Loveland campus received word that the Laramie County College Commission approved support for College for Kids for the summer. So a hundred Loveland students are gonna be at the Loveland campus this summer, so we're looking forward to that. And Heather assures me that they are more than ready for them, so it's good things. Admissions and recruiting, this is their heavy, busy season. And just as an example, between this week and next week, they've got thirty-five different events that they're, they're haunchling. If you'll take a look at that first yellow flyer that you've got there, capitalizing on Ag Week, if you will, they've got an Ag Day that they're gonna take a look, Ag Exploration Workshop, that they're hosting on, this Thursday, on, on the Greeley campus. And then next Monday is a concurrent enrollment event, where the recruiters will work with high school students, seniors, to get their admissions applications completed, and get them enrolled for this coming fall. So they are a busy bunch. And then, not to be outdone, but this was a nice collaborative effort here between the Community College, Community and College Relations, Academics, and SACE. We've got a bilingual spring college fair, so that's a week from, a week from Saturday. And if you notice front and back, it is, since it's bilingual, it's bilingual. So we look forward to hosting that, and doing some really great things as, as well. Well, the next one we got is our foundation, and they stay fully, fully engaged with our community and with the college. And today, they provided a luncheon learn in the college center for our community partners, and they just recently received twenty-five thousand dollars from the Daniels Boundless Opportunity Scholarships. I really like the way that this is done for this emphasis this year. They have two-year scholarships targeted for non-traditional students, ages twenty-four and up.
Excellent.
Which is fantastic, because as you know, that's one of our target areas that we really wanna reach out to in the communities. And so, the scholarships will range from five hundred dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars per student, for those who, who apply and who qualify. And then they're also preparing for some major upcoming events, so you've gotta put this on your target. Stampede Social on July the third, and then also the President's Inner Circle Luncheon on September the ninth. And this, this is an opportunity to recognize and thank all of our donors who graciously give a thousand dollars or more to the foundation. So we're looking forward to that day as well. Last month, I was fortunate to be with a number of you, and, and Carrie, on a very full schedule in Washington DC, attending the National Legislative Summit. That was a busy, busy time. We had opportunity to review key educational legislative initiatives, and discuss them with Senator Cory Gardner, and with Congressman Buck's office. In addition, we also had a wonderful opportunity to meet with two Colorado natives that are both in the Department of Education, and those are both the assistant secretaries, Scott Stump, who's from here in Weld County, and also Casey Stacks, who's also from here in Colorado as well. We had a great opportunity just to tell them the wonderful things that Ames is doing, and if you will, kinda leading the way. And we kinda gave a shameless plug. It's like, we know that you're shooting for these initiatives, we're, we're already doing them. So, if you need an example, give us a call, we can help you out. And they were very grateful for that. So, as you know, a little closer to home, the Colorado Legislature has been very active. And today, right now, we've got Katie Jensen, who's the program coordinator for the new student orientation, and prior academic advisor for the Center for Opportunity and Resilience in Education. She's testifying right now at the Capitol, providing student stories in support of House Bill Nineteen Tact eleven ninety-six, which is financial aid for students with in-state tuition. tuition. Some other things that are on the docket there, being, being discussed is legislation on the family leave insurance. Concurrent enrollment is also moving through discussions, and probably the most controversial bill that you're familiar with is HB Nineteen Tact One Eighty-One, and this is on protect public welfare, oil and gas operations. As you may be aware, the Senate passed that last Wednesday, and it's right now in discussion with, with the House Representatives. So we've got a lot of things going on, and you've seen both sides of the story in the media. And so there's a lot of things out there that are kind of clouding the issues. So I asked our lobbyist, Tanet Salazar, to provide an objective overview of what really is going on in this bill, what are the salient points, and to give us her legal interpretation of what's going on. Now, she's not able to be with us, 'cause she's with Carrie right now, testifying at the Capitol, but we, Tanet and I spoke last night, and so she's got the following comments, which is just regrettably only audio, but we'll go ahead and play her audio at this time for your awareness.
I'll hit that.
That's a fine question.
And we're on. Well, Tanet, thanks for joining us here, and it's for the Board of Trustees, and we just wanna, we've heard a lot in the news and in the media on both sides of SB One Eighty-One with oil and gas, and was wondering if you could give from your assessment kind of the, the real deal of what's going on there with, with this bill.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. There seems to be a lot of confusion based on some of the social media that has been out, TV ads and radio ads that are beginning to run, and then the actual context of the bill. So I'll do my best to kind of weigh through that and make sure that I leave you with the essential facts on the bill. By the way, I have a little bit of background. The state revenue for fiscal year seventeen eighteen is calculated based on production values in twenty sixteen and twenty-seven, and that is the time when production was increasing. A significant portion of severance and property taxes come from new oil and gas wells, since production from these wells is highest during the first two to three years they're in operation. Oil and gas regulations are only one consideration to the industry when deciding to develop, to develop resources. Other factors include the cost of extraction, the existence of supporting infrastructure, the ability to market extracted resources, tax rates, existing business commitments, and prevailing prices. As written, this bill will not shut down the industry as a whole, but it likely will prohibit drilling in areas where communities clearly do not want that development. Since most of the development in the state is in Weld County, that loss, they're estimating will be digestible on the whole, but will be extremely painful for certain operators depending on the exact location of where they are drilling. With the oil and gas operations concentrated in Weld County, just to give you some figures on that, there's approximately, a little more than twenty-three thousand seven hundred wells in Weld County. The next closest county is Garfield in western Colorado with eleven thousand four hundred wells, and then closer to Denver in Boulder County and Adams County, we're seeing four hundred wells and nine hundred eighty-nine wells respectively. In regards to severance tax revenue, the bill will not affect production of currently operating wells during the, the current time, and therefore there is no anticipated impact on tax revenue in the nineteen-twenty and twenty-twenty-one fiscal years. The measure, the measure of future impact on tax revenue will depend on the type of regulations that the state agencies develop and local governments implement and develop, and the effects those regulations have on business decisions to develop oil and gas resources. But since the future of actions of the state agencies and the local governments, as well as the business operators, are unknown at this time, a change in state tax revenue cannot be estimated. This measure's impact on local revenue and expenditures will depend on the type of regulations, if any, that a local government chooses to adopt. That's the, that's the local option here in the bill. It's up to each municipality in Laramo and Weld for your purposes to determine what they would like to do in the regulation of oil and gas, if anything. I'm gonna move on now to the composition of the current Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. So their current charge is to foster the responsible balance development, production, and utilization of natural resources of oil and gas in a manner that's consistent with public health, safety, and welfare. The composition is currently nine voting members, and their job is to regulate the development of oil and gas. The modification that's being made to the committee now changes the membership slightly and changes the role of that commission. Prior to the bill's change, the commission is now intended to foster the development of oil and gas. Senate Bill One Eighty-One changes that mission to regulate the development of oil and gas in a way that protects health, safety, and welfare, just like the commission was charged to do before. I know there was concern about moratoriums on oil and gas, and there was an amendment put on, on the Senate floor last week that said that the commission shall not act arbitrarily or capriciously in regulating oil and gas operations, and therefore they can't do an indefinite moratorium. This is a legal standard that was put in place that has, has a higher bar, so that they're measuring the commission's activities against that arbitrary and capricious standard. In looking at some of the rationale for the regulatory changes that are put into Senate Bill One Eighty-One, I tried to pull together some data for you. There were six hundred and nineteen spills in Colorado in two thousand seventeen, and when you look at these spills, more than ninety-three thousand gallons of oil spilled into soil, groundwater, and streams. There was also about five hundred and six thousand gallons waste from drilling hydraulic fracturing that emerges from the deep underground construction that contains chemicals. There are, after reviewing data, there's approximately twenty-two incidents under investigation where gas apparently has contaminated some domestic water wells. So this is the rationale behind some of the regulatory changes that I'll move into at this point. So if the bill is successful in passing, the, there is rulemaking authority that's created with the, the commission that I just discussed. In the meantime, the director has the ability to deny permit applications pursuant to a transparent criteria that's published and subject to a public comment period that would say a permit requires additional environmental analysis prior to the director approving it. The authority of the director and the criteria are repealed when final rules are adopted by the commission. So the language that I mentioned earlier about not being able to put a moratorium or completely cease drilling applies to the director as well as to the rules adopted by the commission. Some of the other rules that they're looking at are asking operators to consider adopting more stringent provisions, and the rules are looking at slightly more stringent provisions around semi-annual leak detection and repair inspection, requirements that owners and operators of oil and gas transmission pipelines and pressure stations inspect and maintain equipment and pipelines on a regular basis, and a requirement that operators install and operate continuous methane emission monitors at facilities with large emissions potential, at multi-well facilities, and facilities in close proximity to occupied dwelling. In addition to those, the commission must adopt rules to ensure proper wellborne integrity of production wells, which must consider incorporating recommendations from the state oil and gas regulatory exchange. So this would apply to the permitting, construction, operation, enclosure of production wells. It would require that wells be constructed using current standards that protect water zones and prevent blowouts, looking at enhancing safety and environmental protection during operations, requiring regular integrity assessments, and addressing the use of non-destructive testing of well joints. The last area of rules pertains to the Air Quality Control Commission within the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. Senate Bill One Eighty-One would require the Air Quality Control Commission to adopt rules that would minimize the emissions of methane and other hydrocarbons and nitrogen oxides, and regulate air pollution from oil and gas facilities during all segments of the oil and natural gas supply chain. In addition, they're asking that the Air Quality Control Commission review leak detection and repair rules for oil and natural gas production facilities and compression stations, and consider adopting more stringent provisions. So these are all considerations that they're asking them to take into account as they're looking at promulgating new rules. In looking at the impact on local governments, Senate Bill One Eighty-One removes the presumption that the state regulates oil and gas, and what it does is expands this authority to local governments to regulate oil and gas development within their jurisdictions, including the local government's ability to zone land for mineral, mineral resource development, to site, monitor, and inspect oil and gas facilities, and to impose fees and fines. In the event that a local municipality chooses to adopt regulations in this area, if there's a conflict between the regulations or standards at the local level and the state agency rules or regulations, the presumption is that the regulation is, that is designed to be more protective of public health and environment would take prime, primary role when it is in conflict with another, with another rule. So one of the reasons, as I mentioned before, why it's so difficult to know the actual impact on the industry is because we don't know which local municipalities will move forward with regulations and what those will look like. And so that's why the cost estimate on this bill is so difficult to determine. One of the thing, other issues that is to note in the bill is regarding the forced pooling or statutory pooling that allows, if one owner consents to drilling underneath their property, that is enough for the oil and gas industry to currently drill underground. One of the changes that's made in this bill would require that more than fifty percent of the owners must consent to that type of forced pooling. Of note is a lawsuit that was filed in January of two thousand nineteen regarding forced pooling in the Brewfield area. This was recently filed in federal court and has been moved to federal court due to some of the unconstitutionality claims being brought forward. That is a, you know, pretty comprehensive summary of the details in the bill. I'm always happy and available to answer additional questions if they should arise during the Board of Trustees conversation.
Good.
Well, thanks. I know that was a, a bit on the long side, but you can see the complexity of this particular bill, and it has direct relevance on, on us. Any just initial comments on that or thoughts?
Well, I don't know whether anybody else is aware of it, but she did a, an excellent, gosh, three, four, five-page review of the pros and cons, and ifs and ands, and so on, and if anybody would like to read more, it's an excellent source, I think.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's why I asked her if she would be willing to speak and to do that, 'cause it gives, you know, an objective view of what does the bill state, and then with her legal interpretation of what that means. 'Cause there's a lot of that legalese in there, that it's like, I'm not sure what that means, and she's, just does a great job of helping us understand that and its application for us. So, please.
One thing I wasn't real clear on, on the permitting, the new permits, did she say that they're, the state or local would require an environmental impact study?
That's gonna be the state. Yeah.
Okay, is that-
The state would require-
So that, would that be on any new well application?
I think so.
It will.
So there will actually be an environmental impact study required before it will be issued?
My understanding in talking with Tanet on this specific issue is that there will be a set of guidelines that are given there.
Okay.
And the, for instance, I, the, the company that wants to drill, they pick Site A, Site B, and Site C, and they'll say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna pick to drill in Site C because the environmental impact here at A and B, we can't meet, but C, we meet all the qualifications for that. Does that, yeah?
'Cause an environmental impact study can take years, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That helps, thanks.
Good.
And it still could take years.
Yeah. One last little item here. If you take a look, this is the white sheet I have for you there, and this is our CCR to-do list for the trustees. And if you would, and it says, usually it's thirty days, but we've got another Board of Trustees meeting coming here in a couple of weeks. So how can you support Ames Community College in the next fourteen days? Well, number one, if you can attend at least one event this week or next Monday at the Fort Lupton Campus, that would be great. Also, attend one of our recruiting events either Thursday or a week from Saturday. And then the last one, kind of tied to what we just heard, identify and meet with your local municipal officers and get their thoughts on the proposed new authority being given to them regarding oil and gas operations. This concludes my report. Are there any, any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah.
Members?
On the Foundation, the President's Circle, has, how's the Foundation, what are they gonna do for that to kind of make that event most popular?
Well, that's why I'm giving you a heads up here. They're working on it now. They've already got it laid in. They're putting all together the plans just to make sure that the people are appropriately recognized. And so those are some of the discussions that are going on right now. How do we best do that and, you know, just express our gratitude to them?
And the board, the Foundation Board, are they, do they need more members, or has there been any consideration to that?
Yes.
Yes, back there.
Yeah. I know Kelly and I, we were speaking about that, that very issue today, 'cause I've got a, a couple of individuals that, that I'm aware of that I think would be fabulous to be on that, on that board, so.
I, I think it'd be maybe enough, you know, I've mentioned this to Kelly before, you probably got a finger on the pulse, I'm sure, but reaching out to the surrounding school districts, possibly we could recruit some of their board members or the people who know in all those districts.
Sure.
Kind of get a, a countywide participation in that board.
Good, good. Well, thank you for the recommendation.
Create a tipping point, possibly.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And, and I would just comment to my fellow board members that you didn't have to go to Fort Lupton for the board meeting last week, so you can substitute a trip to one of these events in place of that. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Good. Thank you very much.
Tim, I just want to make a comment. I, I just really appreciate the cooperation, the cosponsorship, if you say, of, you know, various workshops and so on. I just think that shows a, an excellent commitment to, to community and us being a, a big part of it, so.
Oh, absolutely.
I think that's great.
Pleasure, pleasure. And it's, you know, as we know, it's, it's a, a whole team effort here, and I've got great people to work with, so it's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to ask Dr. Weiskew, Vice President for Student Engagement, Inclusion, and Success, to come up and give us some highlights from the SACE Division.
You do have a handout, don't you?
No. I have better things, as per usual. So I want to start with some highlights. We've been doing this six-one-one, that is kind of what's happening in the SACE Division for several months now, and so we have passed midterms week, and as you saw in the lengthy score calendar, a lot of our programming is based around helping students to reduce stress and to find healthy ways to cope with stress. You're also finding a lot of those programs are designed to help students look forward. So Vice President Ullman had mentioned, you know, the Career and Transfer Fair that will be out at Fort Lupton, some of those things, where we're really trying to focus on helping students get to their next step. For those who are graduating and for those who are staying, we're really trying to help them figure out what, what their, what their life looks like now after midterms and help them make decisions through advising based on the current semester that they're in, as well as really try to provide them additional resources for coping with stress, coping with anxiety, some of those things that I think we can remember back to our experiences, certainly mine, going, okay, there's only a few weeks left, and I have to, you know, get X grades in order to do, you know, move on in a, in a meaningful way. So that just kind of gives you an overall vibe of what's happening across the campuses at about this point in the semester. I have a very exciting update for you before I get into the bulk of what I wanted to share with you, and that has to do with our financial aid department. Each year, I share with you what our student loan default rate is, and it's usually, the draft of that default rate comes out right about now. It's finalized in September. I was having a conversation with Dr. Gray earlier today, and she said that when she started here, Ames' loan default rate was around twenty-five percent. That's inching up to a very, very scary place in, and, and- That's inching up to a very, very scary place and, and starts to put the institution in jeopardy in terms of being able to offer aid. Over the last few years, because of Dr. Gray's incredible work, her team's incredible work, I am very, very happy to announce that for the 2016 through 19 cohort, our loan default rate is 12%. Dr. Gray shared with me that her goal when she started here was to get it under 15%. And I said, well, okay, you're done, you did it. Not so fast. So, so great work to them. The bulk of my updates are to update you on Strategy One, which is empowering students to succeed. Objective Three, diverse populations, and Lines 13 and 14, which really focus on our work with diversity and inclusion and equity and, and what we are doing to continue to move forward. The Sale Office, Student Activities, Inclusion, and Leadership, as well as the Center for Diversity and Inclusion, is launching a new ceremony as part of graduation this year. And in doing some research on that ceremony, I thought I would share it with you. It was really meaningful to me, and I thought you might also find it meaningful to you. In 1995, at the University of Michigan, the first lavender graduation ceremony was created by Dr. Rani Sanlow, a Jewish lesbian who was denied the opportunity to attend graduation of her biological children because of her sexual orientation. Lavender graduation is a cultural celebration that recognizes the LGBTQ plus students of all races and ethnicities and acknowledges their achievement and contributions to the community as students who have persevered through a college experience that was not easy for them. Lavender graduation is an event in which LGBTQ students can look forward, where they not only share their hopes and dreams with one another, but where they are officially recognized by the institution for their leadership and their successes and achievements. I am very excited to announce that due to the student leadership at Ames Community College, specifically the Prism Club and Al Rodenberg, Ames will host its very first lavender graduation ceremony this year as part of Celebration Week. So very exciting. You will see that on your Celebration Week calendars. You'll receive invites, and we'll take care of all the details as per usual, and Carrie will help you know where you're supposed to be and when you're supposed to be there.
Okay.
The next piece is really looking at our veterans population, and we have some new decor in the room. The Ames flag. If you remember back to August of this last year, we talked about the Ames flag, and we asked you to help us vote and choose an Ames flag for us to, to honor as an institution. And it was our Vest Club students who felt such a strong allegiance and alliance for the flag that they felt like they wanted to be able to have a flag and feel proud of Ames. And so these little dusk flags that you have in front of you, everyone up at the board table, as well as my colleagues at the table here, are welcome to take this flag home as a gift from the Vest Club to remember and to keep in mind our pride in Ames. There's also an opportunity for those of you who want to go really outside the bounds, if you would like to purchase an Ames flag, the same flag in a three-by-five for your house that would fit on a normal flagpole at your house, you have the opportunity to work with our finance god Chuck Jensen, and he will make that smooth and, and easy for you to move forward there.
Taking orders, Chuck.
Does this mean adding a flagpole on each campus where we have flagpoles so that we can fly that one too?
I am unsure of the details of adding flagpoles. My understanding is there will be, it will fly on the same flagpole. However, I will share that we have purchased flags for every campus, as well as some, one for our graduation ceremony and whatnot, so.
Good.
We will be well represented.
Good. Thank you.
How about lapel, lapel flags?
Oh, that's a great idea. Okay. Who do I have in the room? All my folks are at Title VII training, see? This is going to be.
More swag.
I do have some pins for you now that you bring it up.
Oh.
The Council for Equity and Inclusion is, is a council that has kind of moved forward and moved back, but is really dedicated to a lot of different initiatives around diversity and inclusion on campus. One of the pieces that they are responsible for is overseeing the Innovation Grants Committee. So what happens is every year around April, there is an opportunity, a grant application that goes out, and the grant is for anywhere between $300 and $500, and it's to promote student learning and specifically a sense of belonging at Ames. I'm happy to share with you that the 2018-19 Innovation Grant awardees were Ni Ding and Claire Cupp for their First Generation Week, really looking to create an identity for first-generation students and help them know that they are not alone. I'm in fact wearing what I'm about ready to give to you, which is a lapel pin that says "I'm first." And the value in wearing this pin, particularly when you're on campus, is it helps students see that you're a part of their community. It helps them know that they're not the only ones who are the first to go through, through a new transition, something new, exciting. And so I'm going to pop over and hand these to you, Trustee O'Hara, and I'll come back and talk about some of the other CIE activities.
Okay. Thank you.
We also, another awardee for the Innovation Grant was Literacy, Inclusivity, and Diversity by faculty members Leslie Morrison, Megan Friesen, and Jennifer Ridgway from Academic Affairs, specifically in the English program, who had a really cool opportunity where they partnered with the Monfort Clinic Library and the Ames Library, and they worked specifically on increasing inclusive literacy to children at the Monfort Clinic. So that was really exciting. The third awardee was Sandy Myers, who's a faculty in the PERC, and she focused on the mindfulness project. And I don't know if the Board of Trustees has had an opportunity yet to participate in some of Sandy's mindfulness exercises, but it's, it's, speaking of a tipping point, it's a wave that is sweeping through Ames at the moment, where she's teaching us how to be mindful in the moment and center before we enter meetings, before we enter different spaces, so we can do so with intentionality and with putting our best self forward. So very excited about those grants. We can also expect some new equipment on the Ames campuses as, in a partnership with FNO and Human Resources, Ames will be home to two new lactation stations that are ADA approved. So I don't know if you've seen those in the, in the airport, but they're these pods that serve as a place for new moms who need a space to go pump. And so I really wanted to call it like Pump Up the Jam or like Pump Up the... I decided we would just stick with lactation station.
Yeah, there you go.
So huge thanks to Mike Millsaps, who has done amazing work with HR in, in meeting these accommodations throughout Ames' history. However, we've reached a point now where our community has grown and we have a need for some portable stations, so students, staff, and faculty have additional resources. We are also partnering with the Budget Office and HR in exploring different types of parental leave options for staff and faculty, as well as students, and what that might mean when folks have to, have to take additional time due to maternity leave. I don't think I'm going to get everything in. Let's see. This is an interesting committee. Part of, we have one business meeting a month, and boy, is it jam-packed and full and a robust conversation. I don't know that you've ever heard so much arguing in your life, because everyone is really working to be inclusive, which is fun, and I feel super privileged to be a co-chair of that group. Our second meeting of the month, however, is committed to professional growth and development. So over the fall semester, we read a book by Alan Johnson called Power, Privilege, and Difference, where we started taking some deep looks into our own privilege and how that shows up in our work and specifically our work with students. This spring, we are reading a book called Inclusion: Diversity, the New Workplace, and the Will to Change by Jennifer Brown, which is also a very exciting book, and talks specifically about how do we help continue to foster a culture of diversity and inclusion at Ames. Last but not least, the Council for Equity and Inclusion also oversees the Common Read Committee. I'm not, I know Trustee Reckel was able to make it to this year's speaker, where we read the books Outcast United and, and learned more about what it means to be a refugee in the United States. Next year, we have selected a book called Evicted. It's written by Matthew Desmond, who's a Princeton sociologist and a MacArthur genius, that is all about talking about poverty and how poverty impacts the work we do. The reason I share that particularly now is we're truly hoping to support faculty to include this book in their curriculum across all disciplines, so that it can truly be a community read. The FTLC and Academic Affairs will be purchasing the book for all faculty, and the Council for Equity and Inclusion will be purchasing the book for all staff and students.
And maybe trustees?
And absolutely trustees.
Ah, good.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm so excited to engage in that conversation around socioeconomic status, how that impacts us, and what does that mean particularly? As I understand, Colorado is sixth first in the nation for some of the most difficult renter arrangements and, and the possibility of being evicted. So what does that look like for our students? And that is it for my highlights and my updates. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Questions, comments, members? I, I would just like to, once again, say how great we are. And there was an article, I believe it was in the Denver Post a couple of weeks ago, where they were talking about the minority participation in all institutions, I read, I think, in Colorado. And as I recall, percentage-wise, there was only one school that was ahead of us, and that was Trinidad, down in southern Colorado, and not by much. I mean, it was fairly close, so.
Yeah.
So anyway, good job. I mean, talking about inclusion, that's, that's wonderful.
And I think that goes across everyone's work.
Sure.
From Human Resources to Academic Affairs, the work that Timothy is doing in recruiting, really trying to make Ames a focal point of this community and serve our community in a meaningful way.
Yes, great. Super. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more. One more.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
One more, that's me. So you, in there you have the white sheet of meetings of note from February. If you have questions about any of those particular meetings, I'm happy to share them. And I'm just going to keep going unless you have a question on one of those meetings. I would like to read the acknowledgements, although you heard about the ArtiGram, and is, maybe still here. I would like to just read what's, what's here. So, "Kudos and many thanks from President's Cabinet to the Ames Staff Association for the heartfelt ArtiGram Valentine's Day cards, and to Mike Harrison for the special hand deliveries. What a wonderful creative way to acknowledge our colleagues for all they do. This is yet another reminder about how awesome it is to work at Ames Community College." So, thank you for that really wonderful, creative idea and fun activity that really was quite meaningful for a lot of people. So, good job. Another acknowledgement that didn't make, make it in print, because it just happened last week, with regard to our blizzard, I would love to thank John, Dan, and Timothy for 48 hours or more of constant communication around what we're going to do, the weather reports, the condition of our campuses, and the safety of our, of our staff. So thank you so much for being so vigilant and so communicative and right on top of it. So, and I know, John, you're standing over there, so thank you very much. Timothy, thank you. Dan, I don't know if you're in the audience, but please, Mike, pass on to Dan. Thank you. That was exactly the way it should be. We were ahead, ahead of the storm as much as we could be, so that was perfect. Thank you very much.
You know what? I think you made the right decision.
I did, yeah. I think you did too. Yes, I think you did too.
She was worried about damned if you do and damned if you don't.
You never know, but it was good. I would like to pass around the Greeley Chamber of Commerce sort of program that they passed out at their annual meeting. It's their 100th year, and so they had a program sort of of then and now. And Jean was there with us at the table, but I thought you might be interested in seeing, you know, a little bit of the history of what they were celebrating at their annual And just I'll pause for a moment. Are there any questions about the written report in your packet before I move on to... Nope. Nope. Okay. Are there any supervisors in the audience who have a new employee they would like to introduce that hasn't been introduced already? Kaylee?
I would like to introduce Amy Steinert. So, I know everybody knows Amy, but I'm going to brag about her a little bit here. So she has her Master's in Sports Administration and her Bachelor's Degree in Business Administration. And she spent the last four years as a staff exec in the IT Department, and now she is going to be our functional analyst over Financial Services and the Handed Services, and we are so thankful to have her. She's wonderful. So, thank you, Amy. Yay! [applause]
And the other supervisor that would like to introduce a new employee? Once? Twice? Okay, looks good. I believe at this point, Chair Peterson, that concludes the President's report.
Okay, we're down to correspondence. And I do believe we have a letter that's pretty nice.
Do you want me to read it quickly? I'll read it quickly, it's a long letter. For those of you who were not able to attend Conversation Day, this letter is from our keynote speaker, Carrie Knutson. This doesn't happen, actually, very often, to get a letter from someone that you've hired to come and give you a service. So I know the board has had this in their packet, so the board has read it, so this is mainly for us and the audience to understand. So I'm going to read this very quickly, because it's a little bit long. "This is Carrie Knutson. We met at Convocation Day at Ames in the fall, where I was opening keynote. I'd love the opportunity to hear you speak and then to meet with you afterwards. I had hoped to be able to see you again for Conversation Day, but heard that you were off-campus dealing with family emergency. This is all introduction to me. Hope everything's okay, blah, blah, blah." So, let me skip down. "I want to give a special shout-out to some of the people on your staff who I find amazing and were such a great part of my experience on Conversation Day. Stephanie Newton, Julie Lukenga, Dana Jones, Emily Tilton were awesome." When I do that, that means she's got it capitalized. "They were so organized, helpful, and genuine. I loved every minute of my time with them. There were also many people I recognized in the audience, like Ty Thompson and Shannon McCaslin, who I had done other talks for, along with a good half of the guys in aviation and host of others who had seen me before. Everyone could not have been more kind, genuine, and welcoming. I wanted to share all this with you, not only because I got such an amazing and loving reception, and that just felt good, but also because I think you're doing something really special at Ames. I'm a total outsider at all the places where I speak, and I get a sense of the energy and the attitudes fairly quickly. Whatever you've been doing at Ames, I think you should keep it up." Exclamation point. "From my outsider's view, people at Ames feel valued, want to work hard, enjoy each other, and really care about students. If I'd lived closer to a campus, you better believe I'd apply for a job at Ames in a heartbeat. Until then, I hope I can get asked back to speak, so I can hopefully see you and the rest of the amazing people again at Ames. I'm sending you all my best. Thank you again for the opportunities I've had at Ames and for truly gratifying experiences with your staff. Carrie."
Very good.
So.
Smart guy.
Thank you.
He's a smart guy.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on the correspondence? Nothing? Okay. Board calendar. Members, you have the board calendar in front of you. Any additions or corrections?
We will include a more complete Celebration Week calendar for you at our April meeting, so that at least there's a placeholder here for your personal calendars about Celebration Week, but we'll have more details of all the events and locations, et cetera.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, anything else?
Well, I think the odds are pretty good that the Aardvark Fun Run will have a good day this year.
Who is that? I got a new outfit.
Oh, dear. I'm sorry.
Believe me, I paid dearly for it.
So at least two of us will be there.
And you'll pay more for it, too.
I know, I know. I'll get a laugh.
Excuse me. ACCT Legislative Summit. Excuse me. Timothy gave a little brief introduction to it, but there was, let's see, Jean and Carol and I, and Carrie, who we can't do without. I mean, she's our mother, you know? She tells us where to go. I mean, no, she tells us, keeps us in lockstep and so on, so. But I'll tell you, she does a good job, folks, a great job. I would just, I guess, sort of second Timothy's comments. I mean, we did have a pretty busy week, and I suppose the main topic that sort of ran through everywhere we were and heard was the reauthorization of the Higher Education Act. And that's been going on now for, what, eight years or something like that? And they keep saying, "Well, it looks like we're getting closer," and, you know, nope. Nancy's back there saying, "No, they're not." So, anyway, but it certainly was something that was on the mind of those that we heard, again, in various seminars and presentations. What we tried to do, and I suspect others did as well, is to emphasize Pell Grants. You know, it'd be great to do the Higher Education Act, but if you can't do that, you know, get us Pell Grants. And the short-term, specifically, where somebody is just coming in for a class or two or a really brief session for a certificate or something, which is just important, and just as important to our students as certainly the all-year-around kind of thing is the Pell Grants are now. We did get quite a few shout-outs, and whenever we had the chance, we made sure that they knew that Ames College was there and was listening and interested in what was going on. The two people from Colorado, who are Colorado natives, they really helped a lot, because they asked one audience, "Does anybody here from Ames?" "You bet, we're here," so. So, anyway, we tried to represent the college as well as we could. It was an interesting time. Certainly heard a lot of both sides of an issue, you know? How do we get there according to one side or the other? It's just very good, so. Jean, Carol, any amount of comments?
Well, I would agree that we heard any ideas and strategies presented, and it was confirming to just know of some of the things we're doing that are out in the front of many of these strategies. And it's because of the great team that we have here. And I didn't hear anything that would suggest some of our strategies don't fit in with what everybody else thinks is important. But also, I was impressed with the support and understanding that we heard from Senator Cory Gardner for our workforce development. And he even, he picked up on it quickly and threw out some new ideas on how he could help, and it was time well spent. It was intense, but I think on a national basis, the recognition that community colleges are getting for a very cost-effective way of expanding our workforce and giving young people and non-traditional students excellent opportunities to expand their work and their work skills, it just fits so well. So, it made me really feel good about the time that I have been involved here and just keep up the good work.
Carol, any comments?
Yeah, a couple of things on slightly different topics from the conference. I've served for the last three or four years as the state coordinator for ACCT. They like to have a coordinator in every state, and the responsibility is getting information out to all the trustees at all of the colleges. If there are colleges that aren't members, you know, helping to recruit them, that's not an issue at the moment here. And since I will be leaving the board, we will be looking for a new state coordinator. So if any of you are interested in that, please let me know. The state coordinators, we have conference calls generally three times a year for about an hour, and you meet the day before both the February and October meetings for a couple of hours. One of the, one of the great suggestions at our coordinators' meeting this year was that we nominate our faculty awardees for the ACCT Faculty Awards. And we just happened to all get this, and you probably got this in the mail, about those awards, so something for us to consider and look at, so that we get our folks in the mix. Brian Spencer from the Education Commission of the States, which is based in Denver, talked about nonlinear student progression, which of course we have in community colleges, and noted that we're not set up for this at either the institution or state policy level, and to think about that, and see what we can do about enabling those students to be successful. There will be an ECS National Forum on Education Policy, July 10th through 12th, in Denver. Lots of stuff about non-traditional students. I went to a session on food and housing insecurity. And in general, a third of undergraduates and up to a half of community college students have been either food or housing insecure in the last 30 days. Half, which I think is just, I mean, it just blows my mind beyond our comprehension. Food pantries are wonderful, but they're a patch. They talked a lot about getting some resources on campus to help these students get into the SNAP program and county and state services. And that food insecure students also have at least one other risk factor. Talked about food vouchers for local restaurants through their foundation. And to not pay the student, but to pay the student's bill directly, because then it doesn't count toward, against their financial aid, which I had not thought about before. I think that's probably the most relevant stuff for us.
Okay, very good, thank you. I would also have to say that Timothy really knows some great restaurants. For after-hours, for after-hours, of course. Okay, moving right along. Where are we here? Topics for the June retreat. Anybody wanna offer something? How we're, we have officially set the date, right? We did that last meeting, I think, and so the agenda is obviously still fluid, so if anybody would like to offer a suggestion. Okay, Carrie? All right, very good.
Chair Peterson, the trustees, we just have a few suggestions for topics so far, which include a year-end strategic plan update from cabinet members, an active shooter training, which goes a little bit beyond what to do during an active shooting as far as signs to look for, what might bring that on, so that was a suggestion. And also, our service area, and what does that mean? So those are just three possible topics. If you have any other ones, want to share with me, or Dr. B., or Chair Peterson, please do so.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. And I think anybody that, board members, you want to offer an idea, a suggestion, why, you know, get it to Carrie, or get it to Dr. B., and then we'll deal with that later on, so. Anything else on that, on the retreat? Okay, now we move on to action items. Dr. Russ, I think you're up.
Thank you, Chair Peterson, members of the board. Have a brief context I want to share with you on your action items, A, B, and C. And it's a little bit, in addition to what I was sharing during the update in terms of the due diligence our teams do in terms of working with their advisory committees and reviewing our programs in terms of where we stand. So basically, I wanted to share with you, the Industrial Technology Department was working with their advisory boards and continually evaluating whether or not we're meeting the needs of business and industry and providing the students with the knowledge, skills, and abilities that they need to be successful. Recently, meaning this past spring and summer, this team has redesigned the AAS in industrial technology with three certificates that roll up into the degree, so those stackable credentials and industry badges that we all know is so important as we look at meeting those needs. Based on that evaluation and currently the number of enrollments that we've had throughout on the last six years in this first certificate, and actually in all three certificates, where we haven't had any enrollment in those three certificates, they really wanted to look at how we can best meet the needs of students and business and industry, and that's hence the redesigning these programs. So with the information that you have in front of you and looking at this first action item, basically, we're recommending to the board that we archive the Industrial Technology Level III Certificate. I'm looking at these individually.
How many levels do we have?
Think, well, yeah, so basically, there were four levels, because the next one we'll talk about is Level IV. But if you look at the information that is in the packet, you'll see that the Industrial Technology Certificate has other certificates around energy analysis, manufacturing technician, and planner logistics. And Jeff, are we still using 1, 2, 3, and 4, or are we, no? Lee, thank you.
We're moving away from the numbers?
Okay.
What was the response?
Oh, I'm sorry, we're actually moving away from the numbers, so no longer calling it Level 1, 2, 3, and 4.
But the subject area will still be included?
Very much important, yes.
Okay. Could we, you want to go on, and can we do Level A and B in one motion, you think? Okay. Is there a motion to archive Action Item 9A? Archive Industrial Technology Level III Certificate?
I move we archive Industrial Technology Level III Certificate.
Thank you, Carol, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Jean, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, that motion is carried. Now, okay, now on to 9B.
Same information.
Yeah, so.
I move we archive Industrial Technology Level IV Certificate.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Lyle. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, that motion is carried. Now, Action Item 9C.
Same information, no enrollment in that certificate, and it kind of follows with the redesign of the AAS and Industrial Technology Program.
Okay. Motion, anybody?
I would make a motion to archive Industrial Technology Design for Manufacturing Certificate.
Thank you, Jean, thank you, Carol. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, that motion is carried. Okay, thank you, Dr. Ismer. Institutional travel policy. Action Item 9D.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have before you Action Item 9D to revise the institutional travel policy 4-1650. As you can see by the highlighted or the strikeout and policy itself, we're making language changes and removing activity that is no longer applicable to the policy. There is no fiscal impact on this policy change, and the administrative recommendation is to motion to approve the revisions. I stand for any questions.
Okay, is there a motion to pass Action Item 9D?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve institutional travel policy revisions.
Thank you, Lyle, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no, that motion is carried, so.
Thank you.
Action 9D is approved. And Action Item 9E.
Chair Peterson, members of the board, have before you the policy on scholarly ethics, and wanted to share very quickly, kudos to faculty members Lori Hatchell's full-time and part-time faculty member Lou Cartier, who led the process over a year-long in terms of gathering feedback from the Ames Faculty Association, as well as all of the faculty and learning council, to really take a look at, this issue is critical to what we do and particularly what the faculty do as well in working with their students. So you'll see in the information provided to you, this strikeout information, as well as the new language for the policy. And you'll also see in the summary of the issue the reasons in which this was updated. Any questions?
Go on, any questions, members?
None.
Seems like a pretty abbreviated thing to go from a couple of three paragraphs to one sentence, so.
No.
Well, there is, what am I missing?
They just eliminated the top.
It starts up here, and then it continues through there, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I was.
It's underlined, no, crossed out.
I didn't see the underlining, I'm sorry. Okay, is there a motion to pass Action Item 9E?
I would make a motion to approve the Scholarly Ethics Policy 2-150 revisions.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jean, thank you, Lyle. Is there further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, that motion is carried. 9F, repeal Student Success Center Services Policy.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, a little bit of context on this policy. The policy was developed in 2007 and was really based on an organizational structure. And so, in essence, what it did is created a policy to support an organizational structure that is no longer relevant to where we are now in our current organizational structure with some of the other organizational changes that we have. And the recommendation from the administration is to go ahead and repeal this policy. Please note, all these services are still in existence, just organized differently for more efficiency for the student experience.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve Action Item 9F?
So moved.
Thank you, Lyle, is there a second?
Second.
No. I'm sorry, Mark. Mark moved, and Carol seconded the motion to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, that motion is carried. Action Item 9G, the final action item that we have. Appointment of Board of Trustees liaison as election official. Dr. B.
Thank you, members of the board. In your packet, you have the summary of the issue regarding board support of elections. In your packet, you have the summary of the issue regarding board support of elections and election official, based on Colorado revised statute. You have the explanation there. I'll just read parts of it. So it's also per our Ames college policy. Number twelve, Board Officer Elections and Responsibilities. Any of special duties of Board Secretary may be delegated by the Board to a paid secretary who may be appointed by the Board. C R S twenty-three dash seventy-one dash one twenty-five designated of election official regularly takes place at Board of Trustees meetings in March during odd number of election years. There is no physical impact. We are at that place now where we need to designate our election official. So the administration recommendation is to move to approve the appointment of Carrie Schaefer Randolph as the designated Board Election Official for the November fifth, 2019 Board Elections.
Okay, thank you. You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the appointment of Carrie Schaefer Randolph as the designated Board Election Official for the November fifth, 2019 Board Elections.
Boy, that was a mouthful. Thank you, Carol. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Gene. Okay, any further discussion, or any discussion, I guess? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, that motion is carried. Congratulations, Carrie.
Move B.
Did you hear that train whistle? I mean, I think you got railroaded a bit there, so.
I think it's part of the job.
Okay. All right, comments from board members? Anybody want to jump in there?
I'll just say it was a great meeting once again. Certainly appreciate hearing from students as always, hearing the success stories and everything, and seeing what you all do and what we're able to do for the college. It just continues to be a pleasure to serve here. I will say that it was a great hockey game.
That's right. Yeah, but you left when the fireworks really started.
Oh, my gosh, I guess so. But for those, I left a little bit early, so I missed number six. But some of you who left earlier than I did even missed a hat trick. So that was, that was kind of exciting. I don't know whether they've ever scored six in a game or not, but pretty exciting game, and it happened on Ames night, so. It was all fun.
It was a good game. Yep.
And the puck was dropped successfully.
Oh, that's right. That's, that's what I heard.
That's right.
Really successfully.
I was the most nervous about doing that of anything I have done in my tenure on this board, and I don't know why.
You were afraid of falling on the ice.
No, I wasn't afraid of falling. I don't know what it was, but, and I mean, they weren't slapping their sticks at the puck or anything. I mean, it was just drop it and, you know, they picked it up and handed it to me, and away you go. Took my hand, that was it, but I don't know.
It was a fun time.
Yes.
But thank you for all you do.
Yeah, that's for sure. Gene, Mark, anybody?
At first, doesn't matter. I just appreciate the well-organized agenda, and I think it was a very successful meeting.
The Bueno Camp and Trio, golly, it shows when we have some great advisement, we get huge success stories. So those stories are always important to us, especially for some of our diverse community that needs, that appreciates it. That's first of all. It could reach into our high schools possibly more, but we, if we're getting these students with the lacking of advisement in high schools, possibly, we can look at that. Cold weather shelter, if you got any extra dollars in the piggy bank, I'm not, they're kind of running short this year to get to the April fifteenth deadline. I hate to ask, I'm getting in Kelly's way now. That's just a note. Back to what Timothy recommended, you know, we need to participate, we need to volunteer, we need to get out inside of our community, wear your badges, wear your labels. When they see that, they see that we're giving as well as getting for everyone. So it's just a thing. Oh, just a special, I just learned a fun fact, the Evans Area Chamber of Commerce was the first to use area. Greeley has just re-designated their name as the Greeley Area Chamber of Commerce. I just let you know that Evans was first with that. Former mayor we got here, so that's just a fun thing. There's, there's an amendment to the Best Grant Program, and it was an act they made that allowed for more career tech involvement with those, that funding. And the Best Grant basically is a 50-50 deal. The high schools can apply for a grant as long as they have 50% of the funding for capital improvement and equipments. So possibly we'll see some, some need for career tech programs, CTE programs, and vocational, just to keep that in mind. And again, what Gene says, you know, what you guys do is fabulous, and we are humbled every time we get up here and listen to what you have to say, and, and I'm glad to be able to listen to the evaluation of how, how we, how we pay everyone. And it seems very fair, and it seems like it's moving forward, it's affordable, it's sustainable, and that's the most important aspect. We'd hate to raise tuition, just to give you guys a raise. But thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. I just, one more accolade I'd like to throw out, and that's to Timothy, as his organization of our trip to Washington, D.C. for that leadership conference. He really had us on a tight schedule, and with the help of Carrie, of course, while we made it most of the time anyway. So thanks, Timothy, it's much appreciated. Carol?
Yes, a couple of things. I was able to attend the Black History Lecture with the Traveling Museum that was here, it seems like a very long time ago, but thanks to the college for putting that on or for sponsoring that, and was able to bring greetings to Phi Theta Kappa in the substituting for the, for the chair. And we've already talked about the Fuji's Ames Read Event. I would really encourage everybody to read the new book for next year. It's just that the two last books have been wonderful, and you will get a copy of Evicted, and I, I hope that you will read it and participate in events.
You've already got it.
That occur around that, because there are a lot of them. And kudos to Haley Hall for attending the Carbon Valley Chamber Dinner with me on a very snowy night, and we slid our way there. She had a much longer way to slide than I did, and it was sort of an interesting event, and it's one of those things that I want to say publicly, she's done it once, she doesn't have to do that one again. Well, it was, it was supposed to be a dinner mystery theater kind of thing, and because of the big snowstorm, the actors didn't come. And so the chamber officers from the Carbon Valley Chamber just kind of read the parts. And, I mean, they did their best, but it was not as stellar an event as they had hoped it would be. But Haley really led our table in trying to figure things out, and thank you for making the effort to be there, especially in the ghastly weather and roads.
Assessment of the board meeting. Anybody want to comment how well we did? Did we do enough of focus on the strategies, challenges?
Yes, yes, and yes.
Yes, yes, and yes, okay. Well, obviously, it's been said several times, you guys do a great job, and, you know, that's, that's very much appreciated. So, you know, we follow the agenda, we get our work done, we get to ask questions wherever we want to, and certainly the answers are there, they always are. And, you know, I just think it's, again, a terrific staff, which has been said, said many times.
I just want to say that the board packets are excellent. The information we get is, is just excellent and prepares us very, very well for these meetings. So when we come in here, we're well-informed, and we're able to look at these things and get through them and have a thorough understanding. So, and then the fact that you get up and help clarify some points and everything else, we're able to make very, I feel, very informed decisions. So, so for everybody that is involved in putting these board packets together, thank
Any further comments? Well, I guess we've come to the place for Item Twelve. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved, okay. Thank you, Lyle. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. This is the most urgent.